Well, welcome. This is the last week's District Two City Council endorsement interview. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to ask first that you each take one to two minutes to introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about your work history, what sort of civic involvement you've had, if you've sat on boards, commissions, and then also tell us why you're running for office. And let's start with you, Nabil.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Nabil Zeklul. I've been living in District Two for over 30 years, and I have worked in public service here in Portland for over 30 years. I worked for the health department. I manage and run primary care, medical, and dental clinics. I also worked in the Public Safety and Community Justice Department, including the parole and probation office, the missing violence, the UI unit, and the juvenile justice. And currently, I work as a director for the Social Economic Growth Program, and also I manage and direct a program with Malhal to work on alcohol.
And is this for public sector or is this for county?
Public sector for the county.
For Moldoma County?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you. What kind of boards or commissions have you sat on?
Yeah, I've sat on so many boards, and whether it's in the neighborhoods in District Two, whether in the Collie neighborhood, or on the city, with, you know, in terms of housing crises, or with federal and state work groups to address different challenges that's facing the county and the city.
Great. And why are you running for office?
I'm running in office because I bring a broad experience, working in public service, and working and managing large economic and social initiatives in District Two in Portland that have delivered an outcome. I tell people, please judge me based on my public records. It's all there, whether it's in Public Safety, working with Portland Police and Law Enforcement since 1990, in addressing human trafficking, gun violence, gang activity, and also I worked in many, on many initiatives in underserved neighborhoods to address the economic disparities and underserved young of color and make and bring access to these communities.
Great. Thank you. Are you an MD?
No, I'm not.
Okay, okay, all right. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, good morning, esteemed journalist. There you are, Nigel, if you're back there. Yeah. And my fellow candidates that are running to be public servants for Portland. I am, my bio, I was born and raised in District Two. My roots run deep there. My dad's small business was in St. John's for over 30 years. My mom, after raising eight children, went to University of Portland, graduated there. She went back when I was in middle school in the youngest. And I dove into public service at this level back in 2020. And since then, the reason I'm proud of my last four years, running all the time, it seems, my third time running in four years, is that because I've been in office, the defunding the police movement stopped. Because I was in office, we have on-ramps from chronic homelessness to stability and getting into stable housing. And the Safe Rest Villages, seven of them are actually getting much better results than traditional shelters, 45 points better, if you will. And also because I've been in office, we have permits that have been permitting system that's needed a lot of work, and it's been reformed. And I did 90% of that work by getting all eight bureaus together, by getting data sets, and most importantly, getting four continuous improvement professionals in the budget in '21, '22. So that's why this has moved along. And I'm really grateful that Commissioner Rubio took the path and made the layup to finish that. And so I just want to keep getting stuff done for my hometown, and that's why I'm running. And it'd be really fun, and I mean that, to be out of City Hall more and out in the neighborhoods of District Two. And I'm looking forward to that change. I've always been known as someone that tells the bureaucrats that are in leadership, I challenge them. It'll be even more fun to challenge them as a district rep because there's less attachment because you're not in the executive role. So I really am supportive of what we have going on here, and I look forward to being a part of building something special.
Great. Thank you. Marnie?
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Marnie Glickman. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a public interest advocate and a mom. I first moved to Portland in 1992. I've lived here on and off for 17 years about. I have spent the past 30 years working in politics, the nonprofit world, in the environmental world. I am a graduate of Lewis and Clark Law School, so I know how to read laws and write laws. And I serve currently on two nonprofit boards, the Portland Fruit Tree Project and Echo Theater Company. I also served for four years as an elected member of the Dixie School District in San Rafael, California. At the end of my term, it was, the name was changed to Miller Creek. So when you do the Googling, that's why there's two names for that district. I'm running because I refuse to believe that this is the best we can do in Portland, and I want the chance to make life better for everyone. Portlanders work hard, and the city can work harder for Portlanders. And I have experience to bringing people together, having difficult conversations, holding people together, and making progress on difficult decisions that nonprofits make, that my school board made. And I've also worked with other elected officials. When I first moved here in 1992, I adopted Portland as my home and just fell in love. And so I had the honor of working for Oregon Congresswomen Elizabeth Firs and Darlene Houli. And I bring that up because I care a lot about Portland's past, our current times, and the future.
Great. In what capacity have you worked in politics? I know you just named a couple congresspeople, but...
Many. So what, I have worked as a campaign manager, deputy campaign manager, a fundraiser, a political director.
Who were you a political director for?
I was a political director for a nonprofit, a political nonprofit called the Organic Consumers Association.
Any lobbying experience?
No.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. Maria?
Yeah, I'm Maria Hudson. I'm a working mom and a leader at OHSU. I'm in Strategic Communications there. I have a background as a sustainability officer and years in higher education. I'm also a former Neighborhood Association Coalition Chair. In that role, I helped work with neighbors and small businesses, oftentimes getting through city processes, you know, everything from street trees to skinny homes, from potholes to public safety. We worked on those things. I'm also a chair of a couple of budget committees for Portland Public Schools and also for the Portland Bureau of Transportation. I bring that sharp eye to things. I'm running because the Portland that we love is safe, and it's affordable, and it's sustainable. I want that for my kids and for our next generation. It's been a city I love since I was coming up here from Eugene, driving up to see punk shows when I was a kid. But, you know, I also bring an urgency to this. I work at OHSU, and I helped us lead through the pandemic, operationalizing our vaccine response, getting 800,000 vaccines out there, working across agencies to serve our communities. And, you know, Portland, the Portland I love, is a place where my kid can take his tuba on the TriMet bus. It's a place where a solo parent like me can make it work. I want to help bring that back with urgency and vision and accountability.
Where, how long have you been at OHSU?
Seven years now.
Okay. And then where were you a sustainability officer at?
So I was a sustainability officer at San Diego State University. I was the first sustainability officer there.
Got it. And then is that your experience in higher ed, or were there other?
No, I've also been an instructor, teaching low-income kids, an instructor at Ohio State, a researcher, and done public health work, yeah.
Great, thank you. Tiffany?
Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Tiffany Pentson, District Two. I was born, raised, and rooted in northeast Portland. I actually live in the house that I grew up in. My father had a barber shop on Union Avenue, which is now MLK, where community gathered waiting for the perfect haircut, telling stories, very community-driven. Well, I'm unique in the fact that I've worked for the city. I've worked for the city for over 20 years, passing policy to help minority women, businesses, and service, veterans, disabled businesses, with business technical assistance, and also access to city contracts. I've also written policy for Mayor Adams Education Team, which we provide paid internships for our youth. So I still manage that program, along with heading the First People in Culture Program at the City of Portland Team, which is actually designed to look at what is the City of Portland's culture, and how do we build a culture based on the core values passed by City Council. I am also elected twice to Portland Community College School Board work. I'm very proud of the first time, 2019, the second time in 2023. I'm most proud of us opening our 42nd Avenue building that also includes affordable housing and daycare and wraparound services. And we are looking for more opportunities to do so in the different quadrants of the city. I am running because I am qualified. I understand what it takes to move things at the city. I know how to cut through bureaucratic red tape to get things done. I also envision a city where we are safe, cleaning up unsafe and unsanitary conditions like we do with problem solvers who I partner with, so expanding policies that help us address the acute needs of the city in safety and livability. Also strengthening our economy, supporting small businesses, and ensuring there is skilled workforce, housing our neighbors with a focus on families that are struggling, rent burden, and also people that are on a fixed income. How do we provide services and supports to keep them in their housing? And then lastly, just accessible and accountable budget. And that includes looking at making sure that we are resourcing our public safety, 911, fire, and police to match the city's population, and ensuring that we have great response times around 911 calls and all of our other public safeties units. So...
People in Culture Office, when was that first established?
So it was established at the end of 2020.
Okay, okay. And is that in civic life?
No, it is in human resources.
Got it. Okay, okay. So did you ever oversee Tiffany's bureau or no? Okay.
Because I wasn't in civic life.
Yeah.
No.
Got it. Okay, okay. And does the Office of People in Culture, does it include the paid internships and the business support that you were talking about?
Yes. So what it includes, it includes the paid internships. It includes how we fund organizations. It includes how we train and professionally develop our staff. It includes focused outreach recruitment for women, Black, Indigenous people of color. It includes high school outreach. Ooh, it includes a lot.
Stuff like that. Thank you.
Now, I'm saying that it includes a lot.
Bob, go ahead.
I also have experience serving on many boards. I'm the board chair of Kairos PDX, which is a school started by women of color for kids to close the achievement gap. It's preschool through fifth grade. I'm on the Oregon Humanities Board, and I'm also on the Northwest Native Chamber Board.
Great, thank you. Bob, go ahead.
Hi, Bob Simmerle. I went to Grant High School, graduated in 1976. But before attending Grant High School, I grew up in the projects outside of Compton in the 60s. And with a Black dad and a white mom, it was a bit challenging, as you might imagine. It gave me some resilience and life experience, but it also taught me the importance of having mentors and having activities to be involved with. We relocated to Portland, where I say I mentioned I went to Grant High School. My parents got back together, and I attended Lewis and Clark College because my father was a janitor in the law school. So I got to go tuition-free. I was the first one in my family to go to college. I ran the Black Student Union there. I was a student body representative for off-campus students. I traveled overseas and played baseball there. When I finished at Lewis and Clark, I was recruited by Coca-Cola. So I've never been in public service until this moment. I went up and down the West Coast with companies like Coca-Cola, Microsoft. I worked, ran worldwide sales for Tony Robbins. Also worked with some tech companies.
Sorry, Tony Robbins is the speaker?
The motivational guy.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I was on his, I was on his executive team and traveled the world with him, learned a lot. And so I had, I had that experience that came from more of the large, what I call enterprise solution problem set, as opposed to coming from the public sector. In the private sector, you reorganize every year. You're expected to do more with less resource, and if you don't produce outcomes, you're in trouble. So there's an urgency that I've developed over years in working in that, in that environment. I think that there are two things that I bring to this particular role. One is I think the diversity of my background reflects the diversity of District Two. It's 15% Hispanic, it's 10% African-American, it's got a wide range of economic differences. And I relate to that from coming from the projects and food stamps all the way to the corporate boardroom, as well as my ethnicity and background. I feel like I have, not the only one, but a unique ability to navigate throughout this community and talk with folks of all ethnicities and social economic backgrounds. The other thing that I bring, and I think a sense of urgency that we have, when we get together in January, we have to really put our arms around the fiscal components of our budget. We've got an $8 billion budget. From what I understand, the city is the only sector in the City of Portland that is growing. Everything else is flat or losing. Businesses are leaving, folks are leaving the city. And so I want to put some rigor around benchmarking and identifying what we call KPIs, key performance indicators, on all 33 bureaus and all 66 nonprofits. We need to know where they're at, we need to know how they're performing, and we need to support their resources as best we can. The other thing that I'm going to advocate for is all non-union members of the city do not get a pay raise in the new fiscal '25. We're not performing, we don't get a raise. And so we have to perform. I would also advocate, you know, looking at the employee base, the union base, or the employees in the city, and looking at where this new organization leans into and where the needs and gaps are, and start to reallocate resources accordingly. I don't look at laying anyone off, but I think we need to look firmly before we expand any additional resources or investments into people to understand where we're at and how we navigate forward. Finally, on the issue of public safety, community safety, I'm endorsed by the police and fire unions. I want to see the police union expanded. I've had an opportunity to speak with Robert King, and I said, you know, one of the, one of the jobs that I had in the past was working on DEI initiatives with organizations, large global organizations, helping them track the metrics, but also helping them put into plans. So as we look to expand our public safety force, I want to be intentional about recruiting from folks from the community. I have a strong belief that, for me growing up, I had positive experiences with police officers that were in the community, also had negative experiences with police officers in the community. And so I want to lean into that. Finally, my priority around, around infrastructure includes using PCF funds and reallocating funds that are sitting there to put more trees, water features, sun scrains into park features, into park areas, as our community continues to warm up and people in underserved communities can get outdoors during the summer months. And then I want to invest heavily into, the other thing that I want to use PCF funds and reallocate is for underserved homes or underserved communities to put new air filters in on an annual basis, as well as CO2 monitors. As a, growing up in our family, people that don't have financial means don't do those things. So we've increased the air quality for those folks, while also creating some cooling zones and outdoor spaces in the community. So...
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Who do you currently work for?
Currently semi-retired. I'm a business consultant, so I put that on pause, and I'm on a full-time pursuit of this role.
Can you say any of the businesses that you were most recently consulting?
Yeah, so I was working most recently with a company called Pascal out of Seattle, and it's basically a company, I was a director there, and basically we do compensation planning for global companies.
Got it, thank you. Nat?
Yeah, my name is Nat West, and I think my story probably starts with my grandfather. He owned a small business television and radio repair. It goes way back. They say it skips a generation. My dad didn't have anything. It was a small business. He's an academic. And I've, my first small business was in high school. I owned a mail-order outdoor gear company and a caving guide to service. I always liked entrepreneurship, always was drawn to it. And only when I moved to Portland in 2002 did I really find that home of creative small businesses in Portland. And started River Nats Hard Sider in my basement, like all good businesses start in my basement. And grew that, over the course of 12 years, grew that business to the largest hard sider company in Portland. We had close to 30 employees, sales in 13 states, and overseas. And Portlanders have created an incredible community of small business and an environment that we help each other in. But you can't find a small business person who has really great things to say about local government. So I'm faced with this question, what, given what we've created in this city, what would it look like if city government supported us? And that's why I decided to run. I've seen so many of my fellow business owners close or have significant challenges. I've had significant challenges, whether it's simple things like meeting payroll, or more complex things like trying to get a permit for a development project in one of my buildings. So I'm going to bring, you know, a lot of experience with small business and the focus that it can have on the city, but not only from an economic development point of view, but from a cultural magnet point of view. There's a reason why people want to move to particular places, why they're willing to accept a job somewhere. Amenities include things like great coffee shops and street plazas and things like that. I was also, most recently, a TriMet bus driver when I closed River Nats last fall. I spent eight months behind the wheel of a big bus, and a small bus, and the really big bus. And that was absolutely just the best way that I could spend that eight months. And it really drove home the importance of safe roads for me. I'm a lifelong daily bike commuter, so I've driven a bus, I ride a bike every day, and of course, I own a car as well. So safe streets impacts pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as car drivers. So that's my second favorite thing in civic life is transportation policy.
Great, thank you. Okay, this next question I'm going to ask, that you keep it a minute under. And again, if I cut you off, I don't mean to be rude. What is the first policy you would bring to your colleagues on the City Council if you were elected? Nabil, we'll start with you.
It's about economic growth. And economic growth is not only about city central or downtown. We can't have a vibrant, thriving economy unless we address the economic disparities between the east and the west side, and also in underserved neighborhoods. So I want to have targeted initiatives in underserved communities that only, that not only create job opportunities, but improving structure there, also address environmental degradation in terms of access to clean water, air, and even green space. So economic growth, a policy that targets underserved neighborhoods.
And can you be a little bit more specific about a specific policy that you would bring related to this?
Definitely. We can improve, invest in infrastructure. And these investments would bring jobs to these neighborhoods, whether it has to do with roads, streets, also about green infrastructure, about installation of solar panels, about green space, about clean water and clean air. So these initiatives will create jobs and also attract residents to move to live in these neighborhoods and investments outside Portland.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, I would just build on what I've been doing the last four years, which everything I've touched, I add key performance indicators. So with Safe Rest Villages, it was the first time you saw real data that gets to the heart of the matter, like how long are they there? Do they pass these thresholds to move into stable housing? With permitting, it was every 10 years odd, it would tell us, we're doing a terrible job. Now we have real-time data that was set up in every month that you could look at how we're doing in performance measures. So I really would think as a council, we should bring that to the culture. We have a culture that lacks that type of basic accountability and transparency. So build that into each performance unit within the DCAs that oversee the new work areas to bring those, and have three key ones. I would want to focus on that first and foremost.
Great, thank you. Marnie?
The first ordinance I would bring is to expand Portland Street Response from its current state to serve, work more days of the year, and hopefully 24/7. During this campaign, I've been talking with candidates in other districts, and there's, hoping to find a majority of people who, you know, would make this their top priority in the first month. I think it's possible, and a lot of people care about having Portland Street Response, have the right person respond to the right job.
And where would that money come from?
Where would that money come from? Well, the money would have to come from other things. So I do not have a budgeting proposal for you today. I mean, to be very honest. I mean, this is a brand-new council, so...
Sure. Maria?
Yeah, so our recovery begins in the neighborhoods, and our neighborhoods need help around getting people out of tents and into recovery. So I would end, very likely, the contract with a joint office of homeless services. And we are going to see October 15th whether they actually come in with a real, with real indicators, achievable goals. But if they don't, I would like to reallocate that money to a sobering center or a couple of sobering centers, and probably another detox in addition to Hooper and what we have right now. I see in our ERs all the time the result of not having that.
So you would end the, end the contract with the joint office?
I think very likely. I mean, what we've been asking is to, for them to explore the increase in the rate of homelessness. That's the language that's currently in there. We need something that's more concrete and real outcomes, getting people into long-term housing. And a part of that is going to be helping people who need to be sober.
In lieu of the joint office of the city were to pull out, I mean, what would be, would you want to stand up a homelessness office at the city? I mean, what would, what would be in place of that?
Well, you know, we currently are managing things like task sites, and, you know, the county has a lot of money to deal with homelessness and getting people into housing. But what they haven't been able to operationalize, despite good proposals, has been a sobering center. And that's our urgent need in our neighborhoods.
Great, thank you. Tiffany?
So as a person that has worked at the city for so many years, I would redesign how we do the budget. Currently, the budget, there is a spring and a fall bump. This is really difficult when you're trying to plan for the city. And being that I'm on the board of PCC, we have a biennial budget. It allows us to effectively plan for all of the things that these folks have mentioned. And it is really, it's really difficult to always have to say, okay, in the spring bump, do we ask for this money back? Do we not ask for this money back? Instead of just, what is our vision? What is our plan? What is the needs of our folks? How are we addressing the needs of our people in policy and aligning it with budget? And I think that spring and fall bump, it doesn't work for a city this big. It just, it handicaps us into really growing into the vision of the city and actually meeting the needs of folks consistently. So we may do something good for a year, then we don't because we don't have the budget. And so we need to plan for more than a year.
Commissioner, I'm curious about how you've been in, on City Council for four years. Do you think the spring and fall bump, do you think our, the way our budget works is smart, or do you think Tiffany's proposal is...
I think Tiffany makes a lot of sense. I also think that the current practices of spring and fall bump have seemed to be necessary because there's adjustments. And so you have to course correct into the year. Your big budget is, of course, the guiding light, but you can make adjustments as you go along. And so I have, I think it's worthy to have that conversation, of course, but I wouldn't get rid of the spring and fall bump yet because it's good to have those course corrections.
Right, thank you.
Sometimes that kind of court caster...
Yes. So we can also set aside contingency fund monies to allow for the things that come up, which is what we do at PCC. And it works. You just, you estimate, what are some contingency funds to allow in case there's something that comes up. And so I just think it's really worth exploring because I think it has impacted the way that we really visualize the growth and meeting the needs of our city folks.
As long as we keep focusing on grant guidelines and the discipline on how we're spending money. I just brought that legislation to the council two weeks ago. I was floored when I saw that we didn't have any guidelines. So there were, you didn't even have to have a financial statement. You didn't have to tell you who your board directors were. And it's fascinating, since I was on the side of raising money for nonprofits, and when you go to Fred Meyer, Meyer Memorial Trust, sorry, I almost said dead Fred Meyer has more accountability. Then the city does the taxpayers, like we have to like give them all sorts of like reasons why we're doing this with metrics and what success looks like. We need to do that with our grants as well.
Bob?
Yeah, so echoing along the financial aspects as we come into office in January, getting our arms around what the elements and components are. In the private sector, when you look at budgeting, you look at H1 and H2, and at H2, you always reset. So I want to, I want to understand where the bureaus are, where the nonprofits are. I want to have them in and understand what their priorities are for the second half of the year, not only to set the benchmarks and the KPIs, as Dan mentioned, but also to try to save some funds going into the new fiscal year. And in the private sector, when you're overspending, basically what you do is you say, look, we got to reduce our spend rate. If you're looking at new hires, we're going to postpone those until we get to the new budget year, and really try to level set the budget, the KPIs, get all the metrics in place, and the benchmarks in place, so that when we go into the fiscal year, we have transparency, accountability, which the public is starved for.
Great, thank you. Nat?
I wouldn't work to implement any new policies or ordinances because there's a couple of awesome things that happened recently that I'll provide a little oversight for. Dan was part of budget allocation for an office of small business in Prosser Portland that's starting up now. that's starting up now. Like many small business owners, I have concerns about it being housed in Prosper, Portland. Prosper's got a history. I'm not saying it shouldn't have been in there, but it's not going to be an automatic slam dunk just because they're opening it. So, I'm going to spend a lot of time making sure that they have the right set of goals, they're rolling out the right programs that are actually going to make a difference for small businesses rather than just have them keep their jobs.
What's your trepidation around that office being in Prosper? Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. Prosper has a pretty colorful past of not damaging communities, prioritizing white developers over black developers, participating in really bad gentrification of the past. They're making great strides. I think there's some great new folks in there, but the community is still not behind Prosper. So, maybe it's just an optics, maybe it's the office of small businesses, an opportunity for the community to realize that Prosper can do good. There's just a bit of baggage to bring with it.
Great, yeah, thanks. So, under this new form of government, obviously, you guys are going to be legislators rather than bureau managers. I'm curious if you could each talk about sort of what makes you the right person to be a legislator who can reach across into other districts and actually build consensus and get to seven votes on any given ordinance. Nabeel, we'll start with you.
I should have said down there.
Sorry, I'll start with Nat.
I think this is the thing, is it doesn't matter who's in the office. What really matters is how we effectively work together and strategically invest in, whether it's economic initiative or what is public health, what is public safety, whether it's environmental stewardship, strategically on a project that deliver on returns. So, it's about collaboration, it's about transactional. I sat on so many times on discussion, whether it's on housing or homelessness, and you have a lot of people with personal agendas and emotions. And at the end, yes, you validate the emotions, but you need to get them out. It's about transaction. And going back to the joint offices of homelessness, we need to have strategic partnerships that has really deliverable outcomes. It has a performance metric. For example, a 15% reductions of homelessness or a 10% retention of housing. These strategic partnerships we need to have. One thing we learned for a long time, we can't work by ourselves. It needs a collaborative work and sometimes even outside jurisdictions to deliver on things. So, bringing back that spirit of collaboration and the question which should be for any discussion, would this bill serve the Portland resident community? Is it going to deliver an outcome? Does it have an accountability measure into it? That's what gets us moving forward.
Sure. I think collaboration is a word we hear a lot from everyone that comes in here for an endorsement, and we have seen a lot of non-collaboration. I mean, currently, look at city and county, I mean, there's so many examples of where personal agendas or personal ambitions get in the way of actual collaboration. So, I think that's a bit utopic. What attributes would you bring to actually increase collaboration?
Correct. We have a personal responsibility and responsibility to each other as the councillors and also collective responsibility to the constituents and to the residents. So, what we need to do is compromise. We need to make deals. We need to be able to persuade each other why we should vote for this, why we should pass this because we were elected at the end to serve and make Portland better. So, it is a requirement. It's going to require a lot of relationship, building a relationship, trust, communication with each other, and persuasion why your idea is better than the other idea we have at the table.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, I currently try to do both and it's really hard. So, I think it's great that we're moving towards this form of government. I think that as a legislator, I will have more opportunity to bring neighborhood and community voice into the conversation, literally, because there'll be more time to do that. Right now, you often have visitors that are special interests, that are political C4s, and they come in and give you their jargon and they tell you exactly what they want you to say and they kind of don't want to budge on anything. So, that's called a special interest. Not a bad word, but it exists. And so, I think in this form of government, it'll be more exciting to be out in main streets and just like when we're all going around canvassing, you hear the real story. And they don't match what you're hearing from some of the traditional lobbyists. So, I look forward to that. In terms of the word collaboration, I've proven that I know how to collaborate to pass something like the Safe Press Villages. That was hard. And we even got the chair at the time to say they were all in. Same with permitting, bringing all five offices along for three years and all eight bureaus. That was a lot of cat herding. So, I'm pretty patient and comfortable with that. But I also think there's moments where it's about leadership and you don't have to. Portland plays too nice sometimes and we get along to get along. So, success isn't signing a joint agreement just because that makes us feel good. Success is about results for people who are actually homeless, for people who have been chronically homeless. And when the county has been dithering for two decades on this and been in denial about the drug crisis, we had to step up and have a voice. And so, I was proud to vote no on the most recent joint office agreement. It's because I think we can. Sometimes you have to get a divorce. It's good for the kids. My parents got divorced when I was in middle school. And it was like they stopped arguing all the time. And I got to visit them, my dad on weekends. I got to tell him it was much better. It's like they knew what their role was. Their role was to focus on loving their child Danny as opposed to fighting with each other in front of me.
Were you the lone no vote?
I was not. Commissioner Maps joined me and Commissioner Gonzalez, he was like, he got a tents and tarps thing passed, so I made him happy. I was at the bad kids' table because I actually asked for accountability for the third year in a row. I actually asked for inclusion at the table. It wasn't just the people that get the money and the people giving them the money. Those are kish to the ring meetings. We got to stop that. You got to have multi-sector people at the table, mixing it up. Tension is good. Let's know this is hard. Let's keep moving the ball down the field.
Had Matt and Gonzalez both voted no on it and you were the third vote, would you still have voted no to sever the agreement?
Absolutely. When you've tried something three years and you keep having it watered down once it went over to the county's attorneys, you're kind of done. Like I played nice. I've been really trying. And I got the, you know what, kicked out of me all over town for eight, two months trying to build those things. So, I'm kind of like, I'm okay. Like I know what I need to advocate for and it's people living on the streets.
Thank you. Marnie?
I bring legislative skills, first of all, because of my values. So, I believe progress is neither left nor right, but moving forward. And that's the kind of leader that I would be for District 2 and in the city. I know that when leaders engage with the community in meaningful, respectful ways and can sync up with their constituents, we can do great things in City Hall. I have legislative experience, which I mentioned. I was on a school board for four years. I'm a graduate of Lewis and Clark Law School and a member of the bar. And I also am an optimist. And so, I know that to improve our city's economy, to make people's lives better, that we need to inspire people to get even more involved in making the city a better place, you know, to be a leader. And like, you know, I have experience convincing Demi Downers to join on my side and take positions that they hadn't thought of before. And I am really excited to be able to bring that to City Hall.
What's the most recent piece of legislation in Oregon that you worked on?
That I worked on? I have not worked on legislation in Oregon.
Okay, in California?
In California. So, when I was on the school board in the Bay Area, in my last year of my term, I made a proposal to change the name of our school district from Dixie to a name that reflects the Northern California values better. The school district was named Dixie after the Confederacy during the Civil War. And it took about 18 months and 14 votes of the council. And when we did change the name, the kids went to school the next day, the birds were chirping, and we really made a difference. And I use that, that's the greatest legislative achievement I've ever accomplished. And I know we can do great things with patience and perseverance and working together to do new things.
Great, thank you. Mariah?
Well, I'm running because this is a legislative role that also marries with constituent services. I think that's hugely important in my roles as a sustainability coordinator, as a sustainability officer, as a legislative advocate, and certainly in communications. It's been about influencing decisions. It's been about advocacy with colleagues and with leadership. That's something I bring. And when I look at District 2, we have a huge opportunity for housing there. That's something that I feel like we could get colleagues around the table at city council to agree on because it's going to be close to the jobs that are coming forward. I've also advocated for neighbors and having that neighbor voice at the table is going to be hugely important to see that, you know, our communities are well-represented in City Hall. So, that's the approach that I'm going to take. It always, you know, when we're passing legislation, took three Republican votes at the time to do things like fight insurance companies and get maternal mental health coverage.
Great, thank you. Tiffany?
So, being that I serve on PCC board, which we are a legislative body, we are responsible for our policy, aligning budget with it and holding the president accountable. This is the same thing. Policy, aligning budget, and holding the city administrator and mayor accountable for operationalizing that. So, I have a lot of experience in that. I also have passed policy for the city. That means collaborating because of the type of government that we have, that means collaborating with all of your councillors. Thus, is why I have the support of each of the commissioners running for mayor because we work together now on policies around ensuring that our minority women, veteran-owned businesses, ensuring that they have opportunities at the city contracting business, technical assistance, also around our youth engagement, education, also around our public safety as it relates to gun violence and what are we doing to make sure that we are addressing that need in a holistic way. I work with a lot of our organizations and communities, bringing them in to help us write policy, to also tell us how we can better serve their constituents. And it usually is around small business, technical assistance, things like that, and our youth providers. How can we create an environment where our youth are thriving and our families? So, organizations that provide wraparound services to our families, I work a lot with because it is imperative that we have wraparound services to support our families.
Thank you. Have you been endorsed by Rubio and Gonzalez?
Rubio, Gonzalez, and Mingus Maps.
Great, okay, thank you. Bob?
Yeah, so collaboration in the private sector is largely accomplished. We talked about metrics and KPIs. If we have, and I believe if we look around the city and the county and the state, we all share the common goals and the outcomes of solving the problems. I believe that. The challenges are coming into play when people have different tactics or a different approach to solve that problem. And in the private sector, once we have the KPIs in place and once we organize and get everyone aligned, including the new management structure that's now running the bureaus. So, you develop the goals and the outcomes with the new managers and the leaders that align with the mayor. And once we're synced in and we have shared common goals and visions and outcomes, then you focus on the tactics. When I'm running a team, you know, or I'm participating on a team or collaborating with a team, now you have a roadmap to follow. And my approach has always been, "Look, if that's the way that you want to do it, come in on time, on budget, or adjust, and we're going to have conversations around that." The other thing about collaborating in the private sector, and I would think in this new form of government is a great opportunity, is that you don't throw, I've never solved a problem by throwing someone publicly under the bus that I'm trying to engage in the solution. Again, I go back to the intent. I believe that we agree on the outcomes, then we set a roadmap to success, and we have a dialogue around those steps forward, and we hold each other accountable. I think the other thing is, is we need, you know, I always look at this, we're in District 2, but the problems in the city go beyond the boundaries. So, we have to have a holistic view to solving the problems. And as Dan says, I love being in the community and hearing from the community because that today, you know, we all know 70% or plus of the citizens of Portland are frustrated with the leadership. I think that gives us an opportunity to create more momentum in some of these initiatives because four years ago, it was probably flipped over a different way where we're in measure 110 and all the other initiatives. Folks want the streets cleaned up. Folks want drug addiction dealt with. We're aligning now with common goals. And once you do that, you can set a roadmap to solving problems together collectively.
Great, thank you. Nat?
Yeah, so your question was about like how we get through dysfunction and focus on, how we bring collaboration. I think a good way to sort of add that question is what proven experiences do we have with collaboration? And I learned professional collaboration in the Portland beer industry. We're an extremely collaborative bunch. We have always believed that our eyes and touch votes all votes. And I remember one time, my keg washer broke and another beer company took my kegs for a week to wash them. Funny, true story, a month later, their keg washer broke and I took their kegs to wash them. That's how we understood that we would all do better if we could all help each other. And so, that's just how that collaborative aspect is what I brought into this race. You know, I have this big district map of all four districts that gets lunged out, lives on my front porch. And most, a lot of folks here have done events with it. I invited people to my kickoff party. I started the now infamous winners only in an attempt to, you know, build collaboration amongst us. So, I bring, you know, a lifetime and a professional career in collaboration.
Thank you. I have some questions, just individual questions. If I don't have a question for you, please don't take a percent. Commissioner Ryan, the SRVs are, from what it seems like a successful model, they're also pretty pricey. How is the city going to pay for those going forward? And if it's not, the city, has the county agreed to foot that bill?
Yeah, how will the public pay for them? So, we, let's remember that the joint office was formed when there was no big purse coming from the taxpayers. And the city was actually the largest donor to the joint office. Once we passed that in 2020, now there's a big purse. The money goes to Metro, then it goes to the county. So, that's where the money is. And so, as I always say, we should stop chasing money and chase practices that work. So, how could you deny investing in one thing that's getting some results from chronic homelessness and stability? What we need to do is fine-tune and have more behavioral health and mental health services there. We need more of a commitment to moving people from that condition to actually being in sobriety. And so, that's what I would want is more of an oversight of accountability and results.
Has the county agreed to pay for the SRVs?
That was one of the reasons the mayor wanted us all to sign it, is that they did agree to that. My challenge with that is that it's like, I've birthed this child and am I supposed to give it over to the county that's had no history of accountability and actually getting results? The county that's been in denial about our current drug crisis for a long time now? So, it's a little bit like, what? It's hard to think that we at the city, the team that I actually built out of my office to run the Safe Press Villages now, the task sites, I think they could do a better job and be more efficient.
So, the county has agreed to fund tasks?
They have agreed to fund. Under their operational model, which, good luck trying to figure out that operational model.
Sure. Nabeel, you clearly have a whole lot of experience in social services. You've worked for the Health Department. Where is Multnomah County failing on that front right now?
I think we need to look at many of the current projects and initiatives and see if they have performance metrics, if they're delivering good return on investment, good return on expenditure. And then, we would have to divert money from programs that are delivering little or not at all to ones that have proven track records of, you know.
Can you give us an example of a program that you would like to reroute money from?
Well, you know, I will definitely, but I was going to, a lot of folks talk about the city, the county, the metro. It's really about working together. It's about creating, you can't have a thriving Portland economy without investing in the human capital. It's about compassionate services, a wraparound service that Tiffany was talking about, and the community, the business community and business productivity. That's when you get them together, when you create an ecosystem that really get us where we want Portland to be. So, we'll go, for example, to programs that are in social services program, for example. If they are not delivering sustainable income, just put in a band-aid, but not delivering, for example, on sustainability when it comes to employment in terms of sustainable income.
Sure. Sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I'm hoping you can give me, you know, as an elected official, you're going to have to make really hard decisions. You're going to have to name names sometimes. Can you give us the name of a specific program at the county that you believe isn't reaching its metrics and where you would divert the funding from?
Yeah, I would love to see some programs that are in the juvenile justice where they are not creating, delivering outcomes for helping the young people in terms of rehabilitation. I would like to see that diverted to a meaningful initiative that get us where we want to be in terms of public safety, in terms of having some social protectors around those young kids. And so, I'm not here in the business of criticizing by whether moving money from places where it's not working to places that will work.
Okay, thank you. Mariah, speaking as a Mariah, speaking as a candidate, not as an employee of OHSU, seems like you care about fiscal responsibility. What do you think of the legacy OHSU merger?
I certainly do care about fiscal responsibility. That's why I chair two budget committees. I don't want to comment on that, except as a community member, it excites me, the idea that there might be alignment and care. So it's easier for solo working parents like me to bring my, to bring my child and get the care they need at a neighborhood location. I certainly trust that the healthcare HICMO process, healthcare oversight process of the state, which is the most rigorous here in the, in the United States, will look into that.
Great, thank you. Now, would you get rid of Prosper Portland, or you, do you think it should, it should stay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And then another question, you know, our colleague Anthony Effinger recently wrote a story, I think in last week's paper, about how Vanessa Sturgeon, who's, you know, a downtown developer, really wanted, she wanted to put private money into opening up a treatment center. And the county nixed that. They weren't on board. Do you think private money has a place in social services?
Absolutely. I think that there's, we declared a housing emergency, we've cleared all these other emergencies, and we're not. When you declare an emergency, you, the goal with that is to flex the policies so that you can have meaningful impact rapidly, maybe faster than you would if you didn't flex some of those policies. So when we have these critical issues, we should be absolutely flexing the standard way of doing things, so we can have faster impact.
Great, thank you. Tiffany, you've worked for the city of Portland for a long time. You've been steeped in the bureaucracy. Where would you say is a place in the city that has the most waste right now?
That's a tough one. Well, not really, but, but I'm just going to say this, and I'm going to speak, let me just talk about youth and families. And so we invest in a lot of organizations and things to address the needs of youth, the education of youth, providing job opportunities, families, wraparound services. And the one thing that I think is the biggest challenge is the outcomes and how they're not tied together. So we're not seeing the return on the investment that we should, because they're not tied together. Everybody's putting money here, everybody's putting money there, but not under the one plan. And we have to do better with that, because it provides better outcomes for our families. And so I think the one thing that I would address is really looking at, being clear, what is the issue that we're trying to solve around our families, community members, around our youth? And then making a strategic plan around that, and then how does each investment play into the delivery and really getting the return on the investment that's needed? And also make it easier for people to access. I know sometimes I get mothers call, I got a kid doing this, that, and the other. And you're like, okay, well, go here, go there. We need one-stop shop, so people can be served in an easy way.
Great, thank you. Bob, you've obviously been in the private business sector for your entire career. Portland's a union town. We have a lot of public unions who are pretty politically powerful. In the role, in your role at City Council, you're going to really have to navigate that relationship. How do you think you're going to do that?
So yeah, when we moved from Southern California to Portland, my mom took a union job, the DMV. The union job raised us out of lower working class into the middle class. The benefits and the service, she was there for 25 years before she retired. I am a big advocate of union, although I haven't personally been involved in it. The unions drive the middle class, and I will do everything I can to support the unions and their development. And at the same time, the local business community also needs support and development. And so I look at it kind of a two-pronged approach, like, you know, looking at, you know, investing and supporting small local owned businesses, as well as continuing to support local unions and their initiatives. I think we can work together. You know, I think like, when I look at, for example, when I look at the city with 7,000 employees and a large union force, I look at, with this reorganization coming on board, and I say, okay, how do we reallocate the resources that the union brings, the expertise, whether it's by their job level, their skill level, across the organization efficiently, and sustain those careers for either, and have a more impactful contribution to the city? So I think at the, you know, at the same time, you know, when I look at working with the unions, it's no different for me than working with any other, any other group. I have no, no issues or qualms. Like I said, I grew up in a union family, and it lifted us, lifted us out of poverty. So I have firsthand experience and value of that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go into rapid-fire questions. So these are questions, no more than two-word answers, and I'm going to, if you guys try to say full sentence, I will cut you off. All right. Do you think Portland Police needs fewer cops, more cops, or has the right number currently? I'm actually going to start to give you two a little bit of... Mariah, I'm going to start with you. Go ahead.
More police, maybe 1,200.
Great, okay. Tiffany?
More police.
Okay.
More police. I'll say more patrol officers. That's three words.
So unarmed?
No, no, armed. Patrol officers.
Versus what?
Versus other kind of sworn officers who don't respond to calls.
Oh, got it, okay. So, okay, okay. Nabil?
More police.
Okay.
More. That was one word.
Mariah?
More.
More, okay. Did the Oregon legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing fentanyl? Mariah, I'm going to start with you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Wow, you guys are all... Are you in support of the Clinton Triangle, which is the city's first temporary alternative something, something?
Shelter site.
Thank you. We'll start with you, Tiffany.
I knew I had a purpose.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. Voted yes.
Yes.
Literally.
You guys are boring. Do you support the city remaining in the joint office?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner?
No.
Yes.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, excuse me. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Likely not.
Likely not, okay.
The money from the taxpayers can come directly to the, to the city. It doesn't have to just go to, to the county.
Okay.
It's about investing in practices that work.
Based on your knowledge of City Hall, what is the one bureau that you would most like to do an audit of? Bob, let's start with you.
Public safety.
Which bureau?
Police, fire, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. Now?
I'm going to say Prosper.
Prosper. Okay, Nabil?
Public safety.
Which bureau specifically?
These, we currently did a safety survey in District 2, and people wants to have strong public oversight that address legitimate concerns. We got in the use of power.
So Police Bureau?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Keep up. Less planners, more doers.
Okay.
Police Bureau.
Okay.
Housing Bureau.
Okay, okay. Which member of the current, oh, sorry, Tiffany.
I play the dangerous game every time.
I would say the Water Bureau.
Okay.
Big budget, right?
Which member of the current City Council do you believe has done the most for the city? Tiffany?
Which current member? I would say Dan.
No. Commissioner Ryan.
All right. Now?
I got to say Carmen Rubio, but strong second for Dan.
Okay, Nabil?
I would like to share between Rubio and Dan.
Okay, Mariah?
Carmen Rubio.
Okay.
We didn't ask Dan.
Mariah?
Ted Wheeler. He gets a vote. He's been there a long time.
All right.
Yeah, I know, but that was Commissioner not...
Okay, but you can't say you.
Other than you.
Yeah. Yeah, you got it.
Ted.
Okay. Do you support what the city did in reallocating excess PSF revenue to, to fill budget gaps in, in city bureaus? Now?
Yes.
Okay. Nabil?
No.
Okay. Commissioner?
What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Do you support the city reallocating PSF funds to fill budget holes?
Wait, in the future or in the past?
Well, the city made the decision to invest future PSF revenues into city bureaus. So do you support what they did?
Only in the past, the past budget cycles, not necessarily in the future.
Okay, but you support the vote they took earlier this year?
Correct.
Okay.
We need population results from that, so we need to be more creative about where those investments go. So yes, and we need to look at small businesses and the private sector.
Okay. Mariah?
No.
Okay.
SPB Board of Budget Chair, yes.
Okay. Tiffany?
No.
Okay. Bob, did I start with you?
The voters voted it in, no.
Okay. Interesting. What is, who is the one person at this table that you would most like to serve alongside?
You.
Now?
I'm sitting right next to Bob, so I like...
Okay. Nabil?
You know, I wouldn't acknowledge the question and also the opportunity to, to, you know, talk about...
I'm sorry, I got to keep you to two, I got to keep you to two words. I'm sorry. Rapid fire, rapid fire. Got to follow the rules.
Everyone.
Okay. Commissioner?
And that was that I could work with anyone at this table. I'll say Tiffany as we go back.
Great. Mariah?
I respect the voters' decisions.
But who would you like to see?
I don't, I don't know.
Declined, okay. Mariah?
Well, we have a sort of incumbent, so I'm going to say Dan and Tiffany.
Okay.
Do we get two or one?
No.
Dan and I have worked together for a really long time, prior to his time on the board, so I'm going to say Dan.
Okay. Bob?